All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started. I'm gonna call the meeting to order at 5:08 PM. The first item on tonight's meeting is a budget workshop. And joining the board tonight are members of senior staff in the 2324 Student Leadership Advisory Board. I will turn it over to Dr. Smith.
Trustees and SLAB members, the first time I heard SLAB, I was like, wait, what is this? We are honored to have you here tonight. Students, we wanted to have, and graduates, I should say, right? We wanted to have an opportunity to celebrate you again. So thank you for being with us for this dinner. We're appreciative of you, we're proud of you, we're thankful for your leadership in Arlington ISD. We wanted to have a joint workshop. We're trying something new as a team, and a workshop is a way to try something new. Where we take one topic and we get in-depth about it. Tonight is really about the budget development process. So students, we're gonna ask you to participate just like we're gonna ask trustees to participate when we have some discussions and activities this evening. This is really how a budget is put together in a school district. And our trustees, over the course of a few meetings coming up, are gonna have some really important decisions to make. So this really outlines the process that was used to get there, and for us to have some good dialogue as well, okay? So please use your voice, please be a part of things. And trustees, thank you for allowing us to try something new with you. And we'll talk more about this workshop format in the future. Thank you, President Chapa.
Okay. We'll turn it over to Ms. Office.
Um, thank you, Dr. Smith, President Chapa, and trustees. Like Dr. Smith said, I'm very excited about the budget workshop. We've been talking about those for some time. I will say that the timing of this one is critical for me. We have new board members that come on in May, and there's like sixty days before they have to, you know, make the decision of adopting a budget. In our cases, in a $700 billion budget. So we wanted to share what that process is, what some of the things that we've done, yes, we're aware right now, and there's the next steps over there. So I just prepared a high-level presentation that will be very succinct. We'll ask you to participate in some activities. You have your SLAB students here, you can have them participate as well if you... So for the warm-up, what we're going to do is just a little activity tonight.
So excited already.
What we're gonna do is, this activity is, we're gonna talk about the different roles in the school district. And what she's handing out is a form that has statements on it in yellow. And in the little envelope that she passed out, it has the answers. And so you'll work together, board members can work together, you can work with your students, and try to pair up what the role is and what the statement is.
This is a great...
Excellent. So we pull those out of the envelope, and then match them up on there with where we think they go? Great?
Okay, Amelia, I don't know why. Come on. All right. Oh my gosh. What kind of stuff?
Yes. We all...
I'm bringing Amelia. I know.
They didn't get one, so we'll put this right here. It'll be yours.
Are they all different? Yes. All right.
Ah-ha, that makes more sense to me.
It does, yes. Wait, is it two?
All right. So let's see.
So our answers, true... Our answers, true, all from the envelope we put them out.
Yeah. They're in the envelope.
All right. Okay. See, you probably understand...
All right, so the first one is...
Yes, I did. I can run on my own. But then Amelia took right here.
Okay. All right. They use financial data to steer the district. Okay, I don't see... That's gonna be us, the trustees. Ensure that the financial data is accurate in addition. She said, "I can't help you." Okay, do the best you can, okay? Ensure that, that's why it's financial data is accurate. In addition, they... In addition, they analyze the information, helps superintendent make decisions. Who's that gonna be? Maeve, Tiveris. Uh-huh? Analyzing the information, helps superintendent make decisions. That's a good, that's a good point.
We work for them.
So they use financial data to control several campuses and departments. That could be all.
Yep.
So maybe C, I don't know. Yeah, I think that's a good name.
So who is one that you feel like you know for sure?
Yeah? So we'll send Amelia to that. We'll keep it outside. Remind us to go back. They connect financial data and report them daily. Using computer systems to compiling at the end of the month. So that is going to be accounted.
So we know that is not him. So are there any...
They use financial data to manage their kids and departments. Campuses and...
Is there accounting? Would accounting be collecting financial data, recording them daily, computer systems for compiling this year at the month? That makes sense.
Oh, wait. What's going on this morning? Is your secretary... So we're gonna talk about...
So who do we have that is...
Because both entities use financial data. So if they're first, we're gonna come back. Use financial data to determine...
Agency use?
Or...
I think we've seen it.
Okay.
If it doesn't get wrong, we can slide it to something else.
But I have the calendar, which...
Oh, I don't know, they don't stick over some happy... So what would... They use financial data to determine district.
I feel very comfortable with that.
School leadership, manager campuses and departments. That makes sense.
Departments of... They use financial data to... This does... Yeah, that'll be good. I know.
So is it...
Okay, that was a no-brainer. Yes. They use financial data to determine...
Definitely make it out there. So I need to figure this out there.
And then what's your...
Can I have one here as we go?
Why am I immediately approaching... Yes, then that leaves the whole here. Because that is our student...
Right, right.
I was gonna say, it's one of these two, but I was like, let me find this one.
Right?
But the... Day.
Okay. Maybe by just your obligations. Great job. Can I throw one hand out there for one?
Yes.
Number one is not E. Number one is not F.
Number one is not E or F?
It's not E.
Oh.
Oh, number one is not F?
Yeah.
Number one is not F?
So maybe then it is. I was gonna say, maybe that's pretty strong.
Four, six.
See, that makes sense.
Would be...
Because as a board, I think we hold student accountable. So that's what we... We don't manage campuses, that was super...
All right. Darla, we feel 100% confident we have... No, just kidding.
We do.
Okay.
Okay, we'll check our work.
Anybody else, son?
Well, we're good so far.
We are. Only you are raising your hands.
Nice work.
Good job.
Okay. Oh, yes.
Good job.
There's some that way she's... Let's see how we get. Okay. Yes. Yep, got it. Very good.
Darla, they say they're done.
Senior... Hey, we're good. Yes. Number five. Yes. Okay. Seven. Okay, so who is senior leader? Nine, ten, eight. Eight. Look.
This is...
Someone's down one. So I think you should take me with you. I should get on.
Very good, Harvard?
We did, we did the same exercise for our senior leaders back in the fall. We even had a bunch of workshops with them. And I just thought it would be something for the board as we got started to kinda look and, and kinda warm us up. We'll do a couple more activities as we go along. But the big things that we're gonna cover tonight are just the process. What we do during the budget process. Where do we start, where do we end? These are just nine items that I pulled together for the board to look at tonight. Preliminary planning and goal setting. So we'll, as we go along, we'll talk about who does each one of these steps. Revenue expenditure projections, stakeholder engagement and how we handle that. Department requests and campus allocations. Draft budget development, we've given that to you back in May. So we'll talk about that process and what leads up to it. Public review and feedback, the final budget approval, which is coming up here in a couple of weeks, less than two weeks. Implementation and monitoring after we've adopted the budget, and then evaluation and reporting. What we do once we get the budget adopted. So the first step is preliminary planning and goal setting. During that time, we look at the timeline establishment. And Ms. Martin and our team, she is also in budget, they actually create a calendar. They create a budget calendar during the beginning of school, in the fall, in the fall. Where it's detailed out of all the steps that we take, all of them, but these steps that we have to take. You'll note that there are some budget workshops out there that we plan in there, just in case we're able to do those with the board. There's certain subjects that we can do in those workshops to make sure that the board is aware and informed of all the information and all the things that we do to go into a budget. That's the first step. And then setting the priorities. Again, you've seen this slide that Diane's about to pass around. It's where, in the fall, we work with the budget workshop with our leadership team. We create these priorities, and then we share them out with the board and the finance committee to determine, okay, what's going to drive our budget work. One of the things that we're looking at doing in the future is, okay, let's look at what our strategic plan is. Let's look at the goals of the district far as well, and let's make sure that we have those implemented in our budget process.
Darla, let me jump in real quick on this. Trustees, just so you know, on the budget calendar, so that is draft form right now, we're in the middle of looking at it as an administrative team, and providing input to the finance department about things that we might like to see as well. And then we'll bring it to you all, and ask you for your input as well. This is, a budget calendar is only as good as, they're only useful for the school district to help us create a great budget. So if there are things that you're gonna see along the way that you wanna address, please make sure you talk to us in the near future. We'll keep working on this and senior leadership team. Second thing I wanted to note real quickly, same with the budget priorities that were just handed out. In those budget priorities, that is something that the board always needs to weigh in on. I believe you weighed in on it in the February board meeting, if I'm not mistaken this year. And we're gonna try and push that back a little bit earlier in the budget planning process for the upcoming year. So just wanted to make sure you had those two ideas.
And then the third item that she just passed out are enrollment projections. And we've written the model for him at the beginning of the year. We actually get those enrollment projections after the snapshot, which is that last Friday in October. And our research and accountability team work together along with human resources and finance to determine what we think those enrollment items may be. So for maybe the next five minutes or so, if you would actually work together, do a group and just look at what we've given you and how the board can be more involved in the three items that we passed out. Do these apart, and just have some group discussion.
We will serve.
So this past year... So just then there was 427. Did you know it was 55? No, 527. Mark all the way out. And what we're learning while we're in Arlington, because it's July, it's... Traditional rules that actually... So even though it looks like it's... Yeah. So... These four budget... Yeah, just... Something that helps students achieve targets. How long, in college, grand, cost of education, and some things, so salaries may just...
No, I was saying, that's for the... That's be able to make taxes, you know, that is... To kick off the budget on a campus. And that data is the initial part of this. Hopefully, they'll just say why not, if they don't, they need to... So these are projects, but... So if we look at staffing, teacher... And then...
Our funding for struggling, they're not intended... So have you ever, like, ever seen, or before high school, have you ever felt like, really, like, counting all of them? Okay.
Here's the thing, we also 22...
Isn't too crazy? And all these door states are right out. It's more of what they are... They start, roll, and what we do, have people of all these members say, okay, Arlington, all you guys get excellent. Unfortunately, our state process is... So if you have, like, a nine-day percentage of attendance rate, let's cut the guys. But it's better... I know. And today, this is a...
Typically, what happens is, if this one didn't make, maybe they need extra teachers. Eight percent of the budget... Yeah.
Well, we've been along there. I know, I know. I know.
So just analyzing your statements, do we have enough?
Do you like Mr. Sutton's stuff? Yeah, yeah. Yeah. He just kinda... He's a true...
Demoralized, debatable session. Here's what we had now.
So we've dotted it out. That's for a lot, it's a burden of it because Arlington's landlocked, there's not a lot of... Houses, you know, it's kind of like...
So we also... We're typically... Typically, we have...
Because our... We're just like that. We have to, we really have to take our budget. Because there are some tools that, like, you know, we can have a little small tool that's not really... So larger stuff isn't... You're actually having a little...
Like I said, this is just having, like, where we are, or right here, must exist.
I know. I know it. Is that where you went? Okay, I never done this. So I used to teach at...
Basically, because we go to major... Because everything... The student comes up.
Barnett. So every year, we have... We do, and every year, so staff, start year, limited, and stop year, every year. Like, and even though we keep having technically finished out this coming year's budget, there are... So to left, we seem to... So today, they don't have a meeting on here tonight. We have to decide on... We have to adopt a budget, we have to show... And that's in our... And then... Signing the budget in any way that... So... Is he...
Are there any questions about any of these items, or any questions from board members?
I think we talked, just so you know, we talked a little bit about role of the board in the fall when we're starting to talk about budget planning for the upcoming year. Because as you all see in the calendar, a lot of this starts back in October for the upcoming year, and trying to figure out ways to make sure that the board, right from the start, has quality voice in the middle of that. So that's what we talked a little bit about.
And Darla, I was gonna say, on that specific question of what things the board can, our role in this and how we can be more involved, I think the way that we are currently involved that's not on here is meetings between the finance department and the board's finance committee. That happens throughout the year too.
Yeah, understood.
Yeah, good point, Jess.
Right, and like Dr. Smith said, we're gonna process senior leadership of looking at this budget calendar and determining what's in here that needs to be taken out, and what do we need to add to that budget calendar. Anyone else wanna share?
I just love the way this is all laid out. You know, that way you can just see everything, the date, people, everything that's going on. It's very helpful.
Yeah, from our perspective, Matt, kind of touch on this, this is the day going right here for us, is making sure that the goals that we set, each plan for superintendent totally aligned, and it falls out into the image of these...
All right, let's move on to step two. We're moving a little slower than we're...
We'll get there.
So revenue and expenditure projections, that's where our finance team comes in, and they start to calculate what we think our revenue might be, so that we know how much funding we'll have for the budget starting next year. The expenditure forecasting is pretty much the same. For revenue, we need to know two things that you just looked at. One is student involvement, and what is the average daily attendance? And there's a revenue template that they use, they plug those numbers in, and it kinda gives us a good idea in January. A lot of things change between January and when we adopt the budget in June, but they're monitoring that constantly. They look at our state revenue, our federal revenue, and then our local sources, and our appraisal district. So we'll collaborate with them and say, what do you think the percentage increase is going to be? And that helps us to determine our revenue forecast. On the expenditure side, it's driven mainly by staffing. And so that's where we partner with human resources, and they tell us, okay, our FTEs are here, and if we're increasing those FTEs, if those FTEs are being reduced, where are we? So that we can determine what the big expense is going to be. Our salary and benefits are about 85% of our expenditures, and 1% actually is recapture. So in some of our workshops, we'll dive a little deeper to recapture and talk about that as well.
Darla, can you explain what an FTE is for states?
That's a full-time equivalent, so any one position, like I'm one FTE for the district, full-time equivalent. So we talked about our stakeholder input as well, community and staff input, and schoolwork workshops, which is what we're doing here. We've got our districts back. I mentioned that we did a workshop back in October. We have our CDOC. I know that Abel is in with the CDOC as well, so he's familiar with that. And then we have our financial pitchers committee as well. And like Mr. Chapa said, we do have board committee meetings, finance committees, and other committees. But we, what I'd like for you to talk about here is, on the next slide, you'll see where our FFC committee came, and they gave us recommendations last month to the board. So I'd like for us to take just the two or three minutes to say, how can we get more community involved other than just the FFC? We have about 18 members on the FFC and maybe 11 on the CDOC. So how can we get more community involvement in the budget process?
On those committees or in general?
In general.
Okay. I know you guys have been to...
The city bond oversight. Like the ones they give schools, but have y'all ever been invited to do questions? They're actually held in the... So they can present to us in the last board meetings. They give the board... A lot of people are teachers, to parents, retirees, to care about the district. Helping us.
And they would actually respond.
Contending personally, outreach, investing, incentives. So we were just talking about pressure, like, every day, they want us to contend any of that. Evaluating ways to invest in manual work reduction, ensuring professional development is relevant. So like, we're considering, it needs to be... And marketing, so we want to pre-start rolling. And we have a charge training now, we found more units to come down to the PDC. Now we offer free prepaid for employees, which they like. And we want to...
Everybody wants... Their voice.
And in order to do that, we need to make sure... Radio, size, and all this stuff, and we also need to have partnerships with the special... So in order, I think she asked us, like, how can we... This process, I have this thing called trustee checks, that we think is important, that, like, work from home. I know, and I can't, I think the rile-holding, because I can't count. So it's a very new program, so it's really important that we are... I know, I know. Absolutely.
There's a role also, I think, of senior pastors or sense makers in the community too. We want them to have...
You have to answer.
What is it?
You need to start to... It's not required, but your kids can... Graduate. Yes.
We talked about just having a... All people involved, so north side, south side.
Yeah. Great.
Anyone else? We talked about that.
So what we were talking about was that we should advertise it more, not just create more, like, organizations, but is that just advertise it better and especially target people that are already involved, like PTA groups. So like, since we know they're gonna be willing to be more involved into the community, especially like the budgeting.
We talked about the same thing, getting the word out through various marketing avenues and word of mouth because that goes a long way too.
So step number four, we actually, the finance department reaches out, we get department requests and campus allocations. So during December, we open up our ERP, which is our financial system that we put our data in. And there's a, there are budget modules in there for each department. We have probably two hundred different budget managers in the district and we open that up for them to go in and enter their budgets and what their needs are. They go through these assessments, decide what they need and we should always go back to, what are the board goals? What are we trying to do for the next fiscal year to determine what we're actually putting in the budget and can we measure it? What are our budget priorities that we determine before that actually happens? And then just review and adjustment, once we get those submitted to the finance team, we start to look at those, we start to, our revenue estimate and our expenditure estimates and see where we are on those and then we make decisions based on that involving our senior leadership. And then, while we're doing all that, there's a lot that goes into it on the finance side. I mentioned how we calculate the revenue. One little bunch back I might throw out there is, TDA gives us a summary of finance and the form they use to calculate our revenue for the district is, can be about seventy-two pages. If you've ever been out there on TDA, that's how they calculate it, they'll show you exactly how we get to those big numbers that we share out to the board and that Ms. Martin and her team use to actually land on what we're gonna take to the board to estimate. And of course, that only, those numbers are only as good as if our students show up or not, but if we're basing it on a forecasted average daily attendance, we've got X amount of enrolled students, they're showing up for ninety-four, ninety-three, ninety-two percent of the time and that's what we've got to do. So we do a lot of historical, look at that, we don't typically just go on enrollment, it's hard to determine how many students are gonna show up on the first day at school. But we look at historical data to say, here's what we think it's going to be and that's how we land with an estimate for you. This is what we gave you in May, in April, we gave you a preliminary estimate and that preliminary was even before we knew what our taxable values were going to be because our values are not given to us, our estimates are not given to us until April. We don't get certified values until July. So that's just, I want you to understand the process and our students here to understand the process of how we forecast and why these numbers change. I will tell you that we have a great team with finance and they do a lot of hard work, but it's not just finance, it's, you know, our campuses, our departments, our senior leadership, HR, we work really closely with HR, they probably did tire of finance during the budget process. But we have to work together to come together and get these numbers that we share out with the board. Any comments or questions on that? Okay, once we adopt the budget, or the board adopts the budget on the eighteenth, it's on the eighteenth agenda for this year, we have to hold a public hearing, that public hearing, the meeting will be held at that board meeting where the board adopts the budget. It's what we're proposing, we have to hold a public hearing, we have to put a notice out for this budget adoption season, that notice is going out on tomorrow?
How do you put, can you explain how you put the notices out?
Yes, we actually are required by law to put it, it has to be a certain size and we have to put it in a certain paper. The one that ours goes in is a portward telegram, so that will post in a portward telegram and that is actually our estimate of what we believe our expenditures are going to be, our tax information, what we think our tax rate will be for next year. On the tax rate, actually, we don't know what that's going to be until August really, because we have to weigh on TDA to calculate a maximum compressed tax rate for us. So all that we're doing right now is estimating, we keep the super tentative form, we try to keep the board informed of where we are and when things change, we create to you for an amended budget. Final budget approval again, that's going to happen on June eighteenth and then submission, we have to submit that approved budget to the state or any other relevant authorities. We actually have, I think it was in the little activities that we did earlier where we had to go out to our, our rating pools, our rating agencies to calculate what our rating is when we sell bonds and they use our budget information, they look at our budget from one year to the next to see how we're doing, if we have a deficit budget, if we have surplus and they did it with us to determine what our rates are. I think that was one of the items on your activity that you did earlier.
Can you tell us, can you share, what is our state rating currently?
I'm sorry?
What is our rating?
For bonds, we are not the highest level, but we're triple A, we're double A I believe. It's all out there on our website, or if you could pull that up and I can tell for sure, we're rated by Moody's and we're rated by S and P. But we have a very high rating for most districts. I think there's only two or three districts in Texas that are rated higher than we are.
And can you tell us how we get that rating?
That rating is done whenever we go out to sell bonds, to buy buildings or what have you, we actually, it's a process of borrowing money. So these two rating agencies go and basically they're giving us a credit rating of our expenditures, they're looking at our financial statements to say, how do we have a strong fund balance, how is the district operating, those type things, and we get that rating from them. They sit down, we have calls during that process that Ms. Martin and I sit in with them and we're telling them all information going over the financial statements for them and that's when we receive that rating.
I think it's important to note too, that while we have bond rating agencies like Darla just described, we also have what we call a first rating that is issued by TDA in the state of Texas and that's the financial accountability rating that every district has every year. And Arlington ISD has been at the highest level of that for every year that I know of as well. But that goes through the state requirements for your budget and how you're rated on it. Do you remember how many different indicators there are? Yeah, and so there's another layer of rating as well that goes into this, it's not just bond ratings, it's actually our state rating from the first report. And usually you get those in September or October is when districts present those.
It's kind of like a grade.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I had always heard, you know, through watching meetings and whatever, that we had a good rating, but I didn't really understand it until we went to conferences and talked to other trustees and other school boards that they explained the bonds they were taking out and what their ratings were and they were shocked when they knew how good ours was and how we had continued over the year. But it's because we've had financial responsibility, that is also because we have had the forecasts to see far in advance, but also we don't spend more than we have to. And that right there has been huge, that we only take out what we need, but when I spoke to other trustees that were just shocked at our credit rating of how good we had done, that was a good feeling to be like, hey, there's only two other districts in the state ahead of us, that's a big deal. Thank you Darla, that's because of you and Carla.
Did you get the right?
Um, yes, the Moody's is a double A, one, A A one, and then standard S and P, double A.
Thank you.
Okay, step eight is implementation and monitoring, I'll say, okay, so how do we distribute the budget to the campuses? Again, I'll just kind of share that with you where our finance team puts everything into the system. That's where we are now, once we adopt the budget, they'll be able to release that budget to departments, to campuses around the first week of July, not the very first day, but right around the first week of July. Our campuses, our departments can go in and start putting purchase orders in and supply purchases. That's one of the advantages of being a July one, June, every district, that we can allow our campuses and departments to start, to start spending before school starts. Most districts, it's September one before they can access their national budget. And then we constantly monitor it, we, our team has a report that goes out to all budget managers showing them how much they spent, how much they have left and we kind of look at, okay, if we're in December, have they spent at least fifty percent of their budget? And we work with them to make sure that we're making progress on that. And then they justify, kind of alluded to that earlier, where if something happens, our enrollment increases and we get more funding, we'll come back to the board and we'll say, we need to amend the budget on the revenue side so that it looks, it matches where we are.
I do want to reiterate what Darla just said about the benefit that campuses have from the July one, beginning of a fiscal year. Whenever a district doesn't have that, that puts principals at a really bad spot. It puts our finance team in a precarious situation because everything they do right now is estimate and it's important to note that when you don't get certified values from TDA until July, they're, our job right here is estimate. And I applaud Arlington ISD for having the July one fiscal year start because you're focused on making sure campuses have what they need. It does create a challenge for you all and for the finance team, I realize that, but it pays off for the schools to be certified, so.
Then the final step is just evaluation and reporting. So we always want to look at, you know, how did the budget perform, different budget managers, that's part of the evaluation process and how do our, the budget should always support our student outcomes and our student achievement, that's where we start. Again, looking at what our strategic plan is, where our board goals are, what the district goals are. Colleges should have their goals as well when they start to create their budgets. So how did that, the money that we spent, what's our ROI, what's our return on investment and what we did? How are we, are our students being successful, are they performing in their outcomes? And then reporting again, we report out to the board, we report out to our financial futures committee and again, the other, the rating agencies, we have to submit it to TDA as well, so that's part of the reporting process of. And then my last slide is a sample budget calendar, kind of goes along with that one. We're utilizing this, it's kind of a sample from TASBO and you'll know that in TASBO, they start their budget workshop in January.
Can you tell them what TASBO is?
TASBO is the Texas Association of School Business Officials, that's one of the organizations that our finance and HR team utilize. We go to conferences, we send our staff there for training and we work very closely with TASBO.
Otherwise, it just sounds like a clown name.
Thank you. So our budget workshop here again started in January, I like the timing of this, because we're our new board members. I also think that they should probably begin in October. So our senior leadership is looking at the calendar, the detailed calendar that you looked at earlier and we're looking at this calendar to determine how really should it look for this next budget. So for our fiscal year twenty-six, what is the work that we need to do? One other thing I might mention, since I'm talking about budget, is we typically, sometimes during the year, we're on three budgets at a time. Mr. Mike and I were talking about that earlier, where right now, we're still trying to close out the budget, we're still spending on the twenty-four budget. We're trying to actually establish the twenty-five budget and get that approved and then our auditors will come in the fall, but once we, the board adopts the budget, we have to start looking to the twenty-seven budget to see what that's doing. So there's a certain window there where the team is looking at two or three different school years at one time.
And a legislative session can change everything.
Exactly. And that's a very good point.
For better or worse.
That's a very good point. During non-legislative years, we can typically adopt the budget a little faster because we say nothing's going to change. But since we're July one, June thirty district, really, even a legislative year, we're gonna have to make a decision by June thirty anyway. If there's a special session, if they don't land, we just have to actually estimate what we think it's going to be and then come back to the board for amendment later on.
Any questions on the budget? We made it to the end, so any other comments or questions are Dr. Smith out.
I'll jump in, trustees, feel free to jump in with comments and questions too, but again, purpose of this was to try out a workshop format to use it on a topic that's timely for us, we know we have, Mr. Mike joined us on the board, we know we had a couple of new trustees last year. I don't know that this happened in the last year, so we wanted to try it out to make sure everybody knows what's the history behind the budget that you're gonna be asked to adopt here in June, what steps have been taken along the way to give everybody a baseline of information. So that was the purpose of today and obviously, you know, I said to Lee Ann earlier, everything's always better when we add students. No offense, I don't think, but it's great to have our slide students do this today to engage in some conversation, so. Trustee, any questions, comments, anything that you'd like to add?
Yes, ditto, thank you Darla and Carla.
I do have just a couple more minutes, but there's one handout that I forgot. I wanted especially you and Mike to see what we're going to ask you to. Actually, on the eighteen.
Yes, yes.
So just a couple things going out on this one page here. And that is that the board actually adopts it at the functional level. And the function is the numbers there that you see on the left-hand side under expenditure, eleven, twelve, thirteen, those things and it shows you instruction and you'll see that the majority of our budget goes to instruction. This actually is the twenty-three, twenty-four budget that we're working in right now that the board adopted back in June of last year. It shows you our large revenue categories, fifty-seven hundred is our local, that includes any taxes that we collect there and any other revenue that we get from like athletic events and things like that. Our state revenue is basically what the state sends us and then our federal programs, we get a little revenue there. So for the board members, when you look at the one that we bring to you this year, for comparison purposes, you might look at, okay, what was our revenue last year, how does it look compared to this year? What was our state's revenue, how does that look? If you'll notice on the expenditure side on function ninety-one, that's where you'll see our recapture amount. We're right at six million dollars for this year, we're asking another six million for next year. So that's a number that we watch pretty closely as well.
So students, just so you know what recapture means, is that taxes are collected by the local taxing agencies. We don't collect tax money here in the office here, but we have more funds that come in and because of the way the state formula works, we actually have to send a six million dollar check to Austin for them to distribute somewhere else. That's in essence what recapture is, they're capturing money from us and distributing it to other communities.
So one of the questions we get all the time, Darla, is when we look at these budgets is, why don't we just do a zero balanced budget? Why don't we just, it's so easy, why can't we just do a zero balanced budget? What is your answer to people who don't do school finance and see the complexities of that, when that answer seems so simple?
I can tell you got really close to a balanced budget last year, one of the first of my twenty years, it's one of the closest that we've gotten to balancing a budget and it wasn't really balanced, right, because we knew some of the work that we had to do, but we balanced it based on, we knew that we would have excess vacancies that we could calculate, basically that's payroll savings. If we have positions in the district and we can't fill those positions, how much is that going to be? So we partnered with HR to determine, okay, how much do we think, are we really going to. to have a hundred percent fill rate? Or is it going to be ninety-five percent? And whatever that five percent is, we can actually add it to the bottom line. It's difficult to actually say it's going to be zero every time. You can get there, it's never going to be exactly zero. Because you're never going to spend as much, you're never going to receive as much revenue as you think you are. Sometimes you receive more revenue than you expect that you're going to. So there are a lot of moving parts. It's never going to be zero. We always prefer for it to be a little on the surplus versus a deficit. But most districts just do not, based on what they know at the time. Finance people are expected to have a crystal ball and kind of know where it is. We really don't know where we're going to land until the last day of school, when the last student either attends or does not. That's basically what we calculate. So that kind of tells you not. I give kudos to Carla and the team for the work that they have to do and the process that they had to go through just to come to that whole one page of numbers. I hope you're excited that I did a presentation and there was only one slide.
Yes.
Okay, so one more question. With our students here, you know, we talked about that we get paid on enrollment versus attendance basis. So a lot of times we tell kids, like, parents, please don't check your kids out until after ten AM for a doctor's appointment, because we don't get paid for your attendance. We are literally paid day by day. Versus there are some places that do enrollment. Can you explain in the like simplistic way?
So we get what from TEA, what we call the basic allotment. So TEA says, for every student that you have, we're going to pay you six thousand one hundred sixty dollars. And that's just the basic allotment. We have other factors that come when we talk about other populations of students that we might get a little higher rate, but let's just say sixty-one sixty. What they're saying, if your students only can, if your student and you only come ninety percent of the time, we're not going to give you the total of six thousand one hundred sixty dollars. We're only going to give you ninety percent of that. However, we still have to pay the electricity bill, even though ten percent of the students aren't here. We still have to pay the staff and teachers, even though, you know, the students are not here. Buses keep rolling, all those things continue to happen, even though we're paying on the average check we tend to students.
Follow-up question. So how long have we been sitting at six thousand one hundred sixty dollars for the basic allotment?
Since twenty nineteen.
Five years? And how much is inflation on us?
Twenty percent.
Say that again?
Nineteen percent.
Darla, real quick on the zero-based budget question, you do have on your budget calendar, I mean, it does look like you have some departments that are on a zero-based budget system.
I think the way we interpreted Brooklyn's question is, why doesn't the budget just end up balanced every year? If it's, if we're talking zero-based, we do use zero-based budgeting for some departments, and we're probably going to use that more over the next couple of years. What that means is, you're building a budget from scratch based on what you need, here's how we put together a budget. It's a big lift, but in times of financial strain or big challenges, it's a smart way to go about business. So there are ways to build a budget just based on what you need. There's also, if your budget's working really well and you just have to make minor modifications, it doesn't have to be done every year.
Any further questions for Darla? Okay.
We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Well, I am going to close the workshop at six oh two PM. And also at six oh two PM, I am going to convene the board and close session pursuant to sections five five one point zero seven one through five five one point zero eight four and five five one point zero eight nine of the Texas Government Code in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act for the topics set forth on our agenda. And then we will take a brief recess to move down to our board conference room.
Thank you, everybody. Appreciate your time. Slab students, thank you for being here.